Good evening, I'd like to call to order the virtual regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council of Lakewood, Colorado on October 12th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Call.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Vita.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Labrou.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I want to welcome everybody who's joining us this evening or maybe tuning in on a later date. And also want to mention that the call-in number for this evening is 1-301-715-8592. That's 1-301-715-8592. With the webinar ID of 94003390754. That ID is 94003390754. You will press pound to enter the meeting and then star nine to request to speak and star six to unmute. I have confirmed with with the team here that they should have a graphic up also explaining that to you viewers that are tuning in to make sure that you have all that information readily available to you. There will be a couple opportunities this evening for public comment. And so I will reiterate those again. And I would now ask that you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And we'll have a moment of silent prayer after that and then we'll go into public comment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the people, for which it stands.
Under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. So next up is public comment and I just want to signal out a couple things. One is we will have after the public comment and executive report, we will have our continued motion to extend the emergency declaration and we can get into that further, but that will come before the consent agenda. And also want to acknowledge that there was one comment on Lakewood Speaks for public comment tonight that had to do with trash and some issues within the neighborhood about trash. And so we'll certainly relay that information to to the team here, the public information team and see if we can get some better information. So with that, this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in person. I will be keeping the time. It'll be three minutes and I will politely let you know at 30 seconds and we will try to wrap you up. After that, and again, this is for things that are not on the agenda, including the budget. There'll be a separate hearing later this evening for the budget. So with that, Ms. Salazar, if you would please call out the first.
Call ending in 8894.
Right caller 8894. Good evening. You are now live. If you give us your name and ward or address, we'll get you started with your three minutes.
I think they dropped.
Okay.
So the next one will be.
Hello, thank you, city council. Can you hear me?
Yes, caller 8894. If you give us your name and address for ward, we'll get you started.
Thank you. My name is Tom Keefe. I'm in Ward five and I live basically at Kipling and Jewel.
Awesome. Well, your three minutes is on.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak about the weather, honestly, the things that we've been breathing and and the things we've been avoiding. Halloween is less than three weeks away and we're already, it seems to me, making COVID-19 into a boogeyman beyond nineteen and twenty. All of a sudden, all the things that we don't really want to do, we're just going to be blaming on COVID-19. As one of my friends recently said to me, the slash and compost facility that was budgeted back in 2015 and hasn't yet been established five years before we ever heard the phrase COVID-19. It's just one example of how we haven't really lived up to our award-winning, nonpartisan sustainability plan. The pandemic is a time where we can examine who we are, but more what what and who we want to be and how we're going to get there. As people who have sheltered in place running our air conditioners, wouldn't it have been nice if we had funded and met the goals of achieve 30% tree canopy coverage initiatives? Warwick, Rhode Island, where I grew up, has only 200 days of sunlight and has given away a thousand trees a year for almost a decade, saving an estimated $30 per month for household or property owner in terms of air conditioning and heating. With over 300 days of sunlight, we could save even 50% more. That's 50% more to stimulate the economy, allow people to pay down debt, allow people to add to their children's college savings. That's right, more trees, more savings, more trees, more natural storages of CO2, more trees, more efficient use of lawn sprinkling systems instead of just immediate evaporation. The summer fires have shown us again how dangerous it is to take clean air for granted. We have a responsibility to the children of our community, our neighbors with asthma and all the people in Lakewood along the whole front range really, to partner together to plant trees, establish that compost center, incentivize gray water systems in all new construction. Protect our beautiful, four spacious skies, our amber waves of grain, our purple Colorado mountains majesties. Let's do our part to push back against these hazy skies from forest fires with amber air so hard to breathe and our purple mountains becoming gray with soot and smoky air. Let's fund those promises from 2015. Help your Lakewood. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next please. Hello caller 0310. Good evening. If you give us your name and address or ward, we'll get your three minutes started.
Okay. Hello, my name is John Cantelupo. I live in Ward one, near the corner of Sims and 20th.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm calling, I just want to throw out one of the many voices that you've probably heard in support of the Crash Rocketry Club launching at Bear Creek Lake Park. I just want to say it's, I've been launching with the club for about eight years now with my kids who are now 13 and 10 years old. Given that it's, it's, it's one of the many things that we enjoy about Bear Creek Lake Park. We go there for many opportunities. It's been a great educational opportunity for my kids. I'm a homeschooling parent and it's been like a great way for us to get out and meet other people and engage in educational activities like that. It's, I've, it's a hobby I've been involved in for many, many decades. I've launched with a lot of groups. I've been really, really impressed with Crash in particular as a group that really, really engages with the community in a number of ways and educational outreach opportunities and mentoring at schools and with Boy Scout clubs. And to hobble the group and to deny them the opportunity to use the space to launch would really be a travesty to a lot of people all over the community, not just to the people that regularly launch with the club. I feel that the park's decision to, to terminate the agreement to launch there feels somewhat arbitrary, given, given the reasons that were provided. As far as crowding in the park, yes, I mean, Bear Creek Lake Park, it's really, really crowded. But it's not in the same places at the same times. You know, every, every launch that I've been to there, the area where the club launches is not an overcrowded area. It's not conflicting with others' uses of the park. What more, what's more, a lot of the time that Crash is launching is, is at times of the year when, when the park is not overcrowded, sometimes in the winter. At the height of summer, typically, we don't get to launch at all because of fire restrictions and things like that. So I don't see how crowding is an issue. I don't see how danger is an issue because as I said, the club is, is very careful. You know, observes, you know, fire bans above and beyond what I've seen, you know, anybody else do. So I just, you know, I'll wind up here and say, I just am another voice hoping that there is some solution that can be found to allow Crash to continue its, its decades-long tradition of launching at Bear Creek Lake State Park. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, Ms. Salazar.
Call ending in 3143.
Good evening caller 3143. Good evening. If you give us your name and address or ward, we'll get you started.
Hi, my name is Doc Palmer and I live in Ward five, just north of Kendrick Lake.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. This is my second time that I've ever presented to you guys. And I appreciate everything that you do. I'm learning more about how the city works. And I am a big, big fan of Lakewood and calling tonight to ask you to reflect upon an article on US News and World Report about real estate. There was a newspaper article, three or four weeks ago about this real estate, 150 best places to live in the United States. And I was just sure Lakewood was going to be on that list. And it's not. And I was really, I was like, why isn't Lakewood on this list? Because Lakewood is a fantastic place to live with 104 parks and so many things to do for families. It's so family-friendly. I run a company called Space Voyage and I do aerospace educational programs for kids across the United States. Mini and Jeffco, I run a space camp out of Littleton. This would have been my 30th year. So I got to do that virtually this summer. I would like to see Lakewood do three things to become in this group of 150 best places to live. I was told here where I live in Lakewood that there used to be dairy farms. Yet there's no place I can take my kids or grandkids where they can milk a cow or see it happen. I've been told and read that there used to be a lot of apple orchards here in Lakewood. Yet there's no place I can go and pick apples. I mean, there is a park that has apple trees, but it isn't an orchard. Yet we have 104 parks. And we have this wonderful park, Bear Creek, 3,100 acres, which we can't launch rockets in because, well, somebody got sideways with the city council. I'd like to apologize for that. I want to help my kids get there. I work with about 20,000 kids a year and I'd like to get some of these kids over there on the, on the weekends that they do it. And I, I think it'd just be wonderful for Lakewood to do these three things. I think maybe expand a little bit in terms of serving the community. The, we've been all-American cities twice, I believe. I don't understand why we're not all-American city every third year. I don't understand why we're not on this best places to live because we are one of the best places to live. So I just wanted to put that in your ear.
Thirty seconds.
Just encourage you to think about that. I totally support the rocketry efforts. They do it very safely and they really get kids charged up about what they might be able to do for careers. So again, thank you for all you do for Lakewood and thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk. You must be muted.
Call ending in 1116.
Good evening caller 1116. If you press star six, you can unmute. There you go.
This is, this is John Jamison. I'm also calling in support of the rocketry group Crash. I've been launching rockets myself since 1967. Long time. Vernon Estes launched his first rockets. He owns a very popular rocket company in Pinnells, Colorado. But he first started the hobby of model rocketry very close to Bear Creek Lake Park. So there's a great history of it in the area. Denver is the second largest aerospace economy in the United States, believe it or not. We've got ULA and Lockheed Martin and several ball aerospace, many places like that. I work mentoring students from the University of Colorado in Denver. And a lot of them, their first chance to launch a rocket is to come to Crash at Bear Creek Lake Park. Otherwise, it's two and a half hours away to get to anywhere else. It's the only legal place in Jefferson County. It's just hard to find a place to launch anymore and it's getting more difficult all the time. I'd hate to see another place disappear on us. There's very little reason for it. They cite safety often. But if you look at our record, we're much safer than bicycles. We're much safer than horses. We're much safer than automobiles. It's very, very safe hobby. And the first thing we teach kids is our safety code. And if it's followed, there are very little problems, no problems at all, really. And we have our own insurance actually, which I never, I do not know of any instance where it's been used in all of 50 years of rocketry. It is, it's just a good educational thing for kids. I've worked with kids who are now, you know, pilots. People who worked for Lockheed Martin, Boeing, ULA. Worked with all kinds of aerospace companies, basically indirectly by working with students who have later gotten jobs with those companies. And, oh, I, I am a resident of Golden. I'm not a resident of Lakewood. Didn't mention that, but but we do bring revenue to the park and if we can't launch, we have dinner at a local restaurant. So. And that's about it, I guess.
Great. Thank you for calling in.
Call ending in 3362.
Good evening caller 3362. You are on.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Morgan. I'm the Vice President of the Colorado Rocketry Association of Space Hobbyists, also known as Crash. And I'm also a Ward four resident. I'm calling tonight to ask you again for your support in letting our club and model rocketry stay part of Bear Creek Lake Park, excuse me, where we've been situated for the last 35 years. As you already know, our group is made up of volunteers that use their personal time to teach model rocketry and related science activities to youth from Lakewood and the surrounding communities. I think all of you know the importance of teaching our young people the value of learning about science, engineering and math. And our club is one of the best places to learn valuable, hands-on skills that prepare our youth for advanced scientific and engineering careers. To quote from a 2020 article published by the Colorado School of Mines, Colorado's aerospace industry is soaring. There are more than 180 aerospace companies in our state that have produced nearly 30,000 jobs. In my interactions with management at Boeing and Lockheed, they cannot get enough young people to fill their jobs. Unfortunately, they need to look outside of Colorado and the US. In fact, my 14-year-old daughter, who flew her own rocket designs with Crash when we were allowed, was offered two jobs in the aerospace industry. Imagine if other kids still had that opportunity. So I ask you, on behalf of the kids in your community, to consider that what you can do to support their long-term dreams, not just for an activity today, but for a career for tomorrow. You can also stand up for our senior hobbyists who enjoy a way to interact and pass along their skills. We can't all ride a bike until we're 80 years old. As a club, we've done all we could. We've met with everyone we have been asked to. We looked for other places to fly and fought for over a year to keep our dedicated site. You could support this with a simple discussion or declaration. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Call ending in 3624.
All right, caller 3624. If you press star six, you are up and we'll get to your time start if you give us your name and ward or address.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Terry McCrery and I don't live within a thousand miles of where you folks are. But I'm here to talk about rocketry because, well, growing up, I thought seriously about becoming a police officer. What that has to do with anything. Well, that changed in fifth grade and instead I earned a bachelor's degree, a master's degree and a PhD. I've just retired after 42 years of teaching university chemistry. I'm a co-author on two college chemistry textbooks, one of which is the number one selling consumer chemistry textbook in the world. And I've written a book on rocket propellant chemistry that's also number one in the United States of its type. I've had a tremendously successful professional career. And it's highly likely that none of this would have happened if it had not been for model rocketry. As a kid, I liked working with things that actually did something like motorized cars and gliders and flying model airplanes, electromagnets, that sort of thing. But this was in the 1960s and 70s and like most kids in that timeframe, first on my list of interest was the space program. and like most kids in that timeframe, first on my list of interest was the space program. While I was in fifth grade, one of the students brought in a model rocket, not a plastic display kit, but something that would actually fly. And I couldn't believe it. I was hooked instantly and for the rest of my life. That interest led me to learn about other areas of science and technology, and I finally centered on chemistry and physics, which is where I am today. Now, how many of you parents out there that are hearing this have children who are playing video games? Do I need to ask that question? Let's face it, all of you probably do. Wouldn't you rather that they got out in front of that TV? Model rocketry is not only fun, but it's quite educational. Uh, I'm evidence of that. Uh, when the sky is clear, the wind is low, the rockets come out, and they punch holes in the sky. And I can tell you, there's nothing quite like the thrill of pushing the button and watching a rocket you built fly hundreds of thousands of feet in the air. Uh, you hold your breath until the parachute comes out, and it drifts back to Earth and to be launched again and again. Now, there's an unfortunate perception that this activity is dangerous. Actually, model rocketry is literally safer than any sport you can name with the possible exception of tiddlywinks. So it's not a matter of safety. It's a matter of perception more than anything else. If you're interested in having your children in an activity that is educational, fun, fun, and suitable for ages from 10 to adult, model rocketry is a good choice. I would hope that you would support Crash in their efforts to provide a, thank you.
All right, Ms. Salazar.
No one else has their hand up.
Okay, I will wait just a quick minute before I close public comment. It looks like there is somebody with their hand up. Caller 6428. Hello, caller 6428. Give us your name and address. We'll get your three minutes started.
Hello, it's Matt Boils. Uh, I'm also the President of Crash. I'm in Denver, Colorado. Um, I guess we're here just again to remind you that Crash is still around. Uh, we didn't get COVID and disappeared. Um, obviously, we are out there supporting, um, and are supported by the Boy Scouts, the Civil Air Patrol, um, educators, parents. Uh, we have support with the, um, aerospace industry. Boeing, uh, stands by us, and obviously people in your, in Lakewood. Um, so we have a lot of support. Uh, right now, it seems that the only support we don't have is the stuff that we need, which is your city staff. Um, obviously, we have a lot of benefits. Um, we, uh, provide a good, excellent time for families to come out and do something. And a lot of times, they get to participate in something that, you know, and do something together that, you know, most people don't get to do very often. Uh, and every, uh, issue, I think that the park has cited that we were the cause of, uh, turns out, and we were able to prove that, um, that wasn't us. And it usually happened on days that we weren't there. We're the safest, safest activity at the park. Um, so I'm really still struggling to see why, uh, the park staff has decided that they don't think we belong. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so that is all that we have. Give it a quick second. Right, so I will close public comment and, um, just certainly would encourage, I, I know, I know that, uh, the Crash folks are very passionate, and there was a, a comment about somehow they got on the wrong side of council or staff, and that's certainly not the case. I think there's great support for rocket launching amongst everyone, and the encouragement was that the, the city staff has to manage the resources and, and look at different things in different parks. And so that's where this, this has led us. Now, they're still launching. They're still able to launch after a couple of years of trying to work. And, and I guess for the Crash folks who called, I'd be interested. Maybe you can let, educate the council. I hear a lot of folks calling from all over outside of Lakewood, but I'd be really curious, you know, if you're operating within our impacted, our Title One elementary schools, the, the schools where kids really probably would never have an opportunity to launch a rocket, and just curious if you've engaged with them and, and if you do any activities with those types of schools. There's probably about 15 of them in the city of Lakewood. And so if you're still listening, I'd love to know your interaction with our, with our own elementary schools and junior highs. So with that, Ms. Hodson, executive report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I have a pretty brief report this evening. First of all, I thought I'd give you an update on the, the Senate Bill 217 mandatory body camera program for our police department. Um, I, I think the Chief McCaskey, I think he has explained earlier that we've actually looked into body cams twice before, and, um, at both of those times, we found that financially, we weren't going to be able to, um, cover the cost of a program. Now we're mandated by, um, by the state, so we do have a committee together. Um, it's the police department, IT, finance, and HR. And we will implement within the law a body cam program for all, um, for all sworn law enforcement employees in the city. Um, and our hope is, our goal is to have that done by March of 2022, which is in advance of the deadline of the bill, but we just wanted to get this done as quick as possible. We think it's about a 16 to 18 month, um, lead. So just, just an update as we have, as we have more progress, I'll make sure to report that to you. And as you know, we, um, don't have a city clerk right now. We have our fearless interim city clerk, Ben Goldstein. Um, and to his great relief, we've started the interviews for our city, for our next city clerk. We conducted two interviews today, and we'll continue that process. And of course, I'll update you, um, as that process is concluded. Um, this is pretty good news. In the area of public works, we've successfully achieved a Class Six rating in FEMA's program for flood, flood plain management. And what this does is it results in a 20% premium discount to Lakewood property owners who purchase federal flood insurance policies. So that's really good news. It's a, creates a discount for our citizens, and, um, that was a multi-departmental, um, effort. So thanks to all the folks who worked on that on behalf of the, the citizens of Lakewood. And finally, it wouldn't be an executive report if I didn't update you on the latest and greatest openings in our, um, in our continual opening of programs and services and community resources. So we are happy to announce that we are now taking reservations for indoor pickleball and racquetball at both Carmody and Green Mountain Recreation Center. You would be surprised how popular pickleball is, um, and of course, racquetball is always. We also are starting a program, which is an evening glow stick workout, evening glow stick workout, um, at the fitness court outside at Edinburgh Park. So I hope to see all of you there with your glow sticks. Um, the Jeff, Jeffco Public Health is conducting a free flu vaccine, uh, clinic outside of, um, Charles Whitlock Center, and that's on, that's on October 22nd. So it's a free flu vaccine, um, clinic outside at Whitlock Center on October 22nd. The visitor center at Bear Creek Lake Park is just going to be reopened, and kids can come by and pick up an activity book to become junior rangers. So that's a cool opportunity for our kids, um, in this city. And finally, Sprout City Farms is seeking leaves to help winterize, um, Mount Air Park Community Farm. So, not anything else but leaves, but if you happen to have leaves where you can donate so they can help winterize the, the farm over there, please bring those leaves to 13th and Depew. There's a sign that indicates exactly where to drop those off, 13th and Depew, and they'll be taking those leaves through November 15th. Though there's, I'm sure there's more information on the website, but that's just to let you know, there's a lot of things happening in community resources. And with that, my, my report's concluded. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I think they used to call the glow stick parties raves back in the day, so I guess this is what they've graduated to.
Yeah, so meet you there.
Meet you there. All right. So with that, I'm going to go to the mayor pro tem here in a quick sec. The, it's, um, extension of the emergency declaration. Um, as you know, we're continuing to be under certain orders either via the health department or, um, increased mask mandate by the governor, which I think went back into effect or was extended yesterday. So all these different moving pieces are still in play. So we are doing check-ins every other week or so. And so with that, I'll ask the mayor pro tem for a motion.
I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the city of Lakewood, Colorado resulting from the coronavirus slash COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to Section 1.27 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation of the Lakewood City Manager on March 17th, 2020, extended by majority of the city council on multiple occasions, and by this motion extended again until October 26th, 2020, unless earlier extended or terminated by the city council.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes 10 aye, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda. And the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances, which tonight there are no first reading ordinances on the consent. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. With that, I will now ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
The consent agenda includes items six to nine inclusive. Item six, Resolution 2020-40, appointing a member to the Board of Appeals. Item seven, Resolution 2020-41, appointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Item eight, Resolution 2020-42, reappointing a member to the Noxious Weed Local Advisory Board. Item nine, Resolution 2020-43, appointing and reappointing members to the Victim Assistance Compensation Board.
Okay, so I will open the public comment portion. Then after I close that, I'll go to Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I'll go to Counselor Abel, who's the Chair of the Screening Committee, and he'll speak to the different ones before we, we take a vote. So, Madam Clerk, I don't see anybody with their hand up. If you wish to speak on item six, seven, eight, or nine, which are appointments, please do so by pressing star nine, so we can see that you'd like to speak. Okay, I will close public comment and, uh, ask for a motion, and then I'll go to Counselor Abel.
I move for the adoption of the resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second. Counselor Abel. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the screening committee. Uh, Councilwoman Dana Gutwine, Councilman Mike Bita, Councilwoman Barb Franks, and, uh, Councilwoman Sharon Vincent. Uh, we've had a number of lengthy interviews, uh, and interview sessions, uh, in recent weeks and months, and, uh, have come up with some, uh, very good candidates. We're always impressed by the, uh, field of candidates we have, and it is difficult, uh, selecting the nominee and, uh, from among a group of very highly qualified folks and very eager folks who want to serve, uh, the community as volunteers. So tonight, we're nominating for the Board of Appeals, Robert Ramstour, to fill an unexpired three-year term that will end on March 31st, 2022, for the Lakewood Advisory Commission, uh, Emily Gambon and Joshua Oliver, uh, both three-year terms, uh, that will end on December 31st, uh, 2022. The, uh, an appointee, Sylvia Greenman, to the Noxious Weed Advisory Board. Not that the board's noxious, the weeds are noxious. Uh, to a three-year term that will end on May 31st, 2023, and, uh, a new member of the Victims Assistance, uh, Commission, uh, Anthony Hermosillo, and he has a three-year term that ends on September 30th, 2023. We're reappointing Mark Deedle and Stephen Hall to three-year terms also ending September 30th, 2023. You're on mute, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I, I appreciate that and certainly want to thank everybody. I know these things can be challenging after sitting on the, the screening committee for some time. So a lot of great folks, but really important to see people step up. And, uh, it was nice to see I saw Anthony on there. So congrats. I, I had no Anthony from another deal. But that's cool to see that you applied. So, any other comments? And Counselor Johnson, your hand is up, but I think it's up from voting last time. Okay. All right. Well, we have a first and a second on the consent agenda. If no more questions or comments, please cast your votes. And that passes 11 ayes and zero nays. Very cool. Okay, so next up is item 10, and this is unique in that normally we don't take public comment on first readings, but this is the budget, and so we have two formal public hearings on the budget. Um, in a minute here, we will turn it over for, I think, a brief presentation. And again, want to thank council. There have been a ton of great questions that have come in, and I think there was a, a rendition that went out later, later this evening with some more answers. And I, I think it might be helpful to make sure as we go forward that the public is able to see those. Maybe they are, maybe they're not on Lakewood speaks, but a lot of very thorough questions. And I know that there may be some tonight. And I would just ask council, if you do have some this evening, if you know the page number that you're referring to, that'd be super helpful for, for folks that are trying to follow on. And then Counselor Bita is the Chair of the Budget Audit Committee, and normally they would be, you know, participating, and they have been giving monthly updates and briefings, uh, during COVID. And so they're actually going to meet next Monday as a group, and there may be some, some further questions that come out after next Monday, uh, prior to the very final adoption, which I think is October 26th. So with that, we will go into the presentation, or actually, no, I'll open the public hearing on item 10. And I'll actually have the clerk please read it into the record.
Thank you. Item 10, First Public Hearing Ordinance O 2020-26, adopting a revised budget for the year 2020 for the city of Lakewood, Colorado, and further adopting the annual budget for the city for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2020 and ending December 31, 2020, estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by levy, levy, levying taxes for the year 2020 to defray the costs of municipal government of the city of Lakewood, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2021, and estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources setting forth the appropriations for each fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Ms. Hodson, do you want me to, uh, turn it over to Ms. Bjorkland? Are you gonna start this one off? Or are you gonna start this one off?
Uh, no, actually, if you want to just introduce our CFO, Holly Bjorkland, that would be terrific. Or maybe I just did.
Yes, we'll, we'll go with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, it's yours.
Good evening, Ms. Bjorkland.
Good evening, everyone. As usual, I will share my presentation with you. Okay. Everyone can see it. Thumbs up. Tonight, we're going to have the first hearing on the 2020 revised budget and 2021 proposed budget. There was a study session, discussion on September 14th, in which the budget was discussed in length. Um, today, we'll be covering the budget at a higher level. If anyone would like to see the more detailed presentation, they can see it on Lakewood Speaks. The city of Lakewood is experiencing unprecedented times due to the pandemic. As you know, this also affects the budget and the budget process. The city is adapting to the current circumstances, continuing the important work of serving the residents of Lakewood and safeguarding a sustainable financial future. This budget presentation is a financial reflection of the community's priorities and a collaborative effort of city council, staff, and community members to develop a plan that continues to provide quality programs and services for the community. What we'll be covering today is the proposed 2020 revised budget and the 2021 budget. We'll cover the total city budget, general fund, Tabor fund, and then Mr. Smith will cover the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority, and we'll talk about next steps. We'll start with looking at the financial citywide. This doughnut shows you the distribution of revenue by fund that is forecasted for 2021. As you can see, the citywide general fund is the largest, followed by special revenue funds, the green one. Uh, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. The city is experiencing similar challenges in revenue for the capital fund as the general fund. As the city infrastructure ages each year, a larger percent of the revenue in the fund must be used for annual maintenance rather than the new capital projects. Since there is not a corresponding growth in ongoing revenue, this uh, compresses investments in new capital projects. This slide displays how this, all city funds are spent by department. What is included in all departments, so this orange section here, is mayor, council, city mayor's office, city clerk, city attorney, finance, HR, municipal court, and planning. Each individual department and all others, less than 3% of the total spending, and that's why they're all combined together. Non-departments, this gray section, includes citywide employee benefits, debt obligations, special projects, and self-insured funding. You can also see each color of the department has a shaded area. We talked about this the last time. So, for example, here. Uh, the shaded area is non-personnel, and the non-shaded area is personnel. One item to note is although Public Works is larger in spending, so the green section down at the bottom is larger in spending uh, than the police, citywide, but 80% of Public Works expenses is non-personnel. So this shaded area down here, and that's things like asphalt. You can also see for the Community Resources, 46, 47% is also non-personnel, which are expenses for facilities such as rec centers, and the police primary is personnel. So you can see this section is all personnel. Moving on to the general fund, the general fund has a challenge of $17 million funding gap from the 2020 budget, as we discussed the last time. As schools and recreation centers closed, so did businesses of all types from the pandemic. The closures had a profound and extraordinary economic impact on businesses, and in turn, the city of Lakewood. There's been a significant decline in sales and use tax, which currently represents 49% of the city's total spending. Sorry, funding. These revenues are critical for the funding of many city services, such as police, road maintenance, city facilities, and support services. The general fund also has an ongoing challenge of limited revenue growth due to Tabor. Additionally, as an established city, the staff are evaluating and adjusting the financial approach for the city. Lakewood has several revenue challenges beyond the financial impact of the pandemic. The city is, the city is expecting longer-term challenges with sustaining revenue. Lakewood is experiencing a flattening and potential decline of current revenue sources, resulting from a number of factors, including customers shifting to online shopping, customers purchasing more untaxed services than tax goods, Lakewood becoming an established city, and the city's relatively low sales tax rate. Lakewood is evaluating the current revenue sources and potential changes for the future to sustain the city's financial health while continuing to provide core services to the residents. A challenge for an established city such as Lakewood is that demands and needs for services continue to grow, but there's not a corresponding growth in revenue for businesses or new residents. So in order to explore and address these um, challenges I just mentioned, the city is reviewing opportunities with the Budget and Audit Board and Lakewood City Council. To date, a list of revenue opportunities have been presented to the Budget and Audit Board and City Council. A summarization of these opportunities that the City Council identified to explore further are on the slide, and they are standardizing sales tax definition and update sales tax code to be consistent with other governmental entities. And that's what we're actually going to be discussing on October 19th. Um, and uh, the City Council has been invited, as well as the Budget and Audit Board. Um, also reviewing the tax exemptions, consider taxation of specific services, legalization of specific business activities, Tabor revenue, potential annexation of commercial areas. The first item, um, as I mentioned, will be uh, covered on October 19th. And to discuss the proposed language changes to the code. Um, and then the next discussion will be at a study session on November 2nd. This slide shows the distribution of general fund revenue by type of revenue for the 2021 budget. Most of these groupings are clear as to what they include. The ones that, um, that does not is the intergovernmental. This includes the state and federal funding. And other includes fines, forfeits, and investment income. As I just mentioned, the 2021 budget anticipates lower sales and use tax revenue due to the pandemic. This, as well as an increase in property tax, has changed the proportions of where the general fund receives revenue. Sales tax use, uh, sales and use tax revenue for 2021 are expected to be 62%, which you can see here in the blue, of all general fund revenue. Property and charges for services, 10%, so these two are 10%. Um, franchise fees and intergovernmental revenue, 5%, and all other, 8%. This is projected, a projected decrease of 8% in sales and use tax compared to the 2019 actuals. Additionally, property tax has increased by 12% compared to the 2019 actuals. As a percent of the whole 2020 budget, sales and use tax was 63% and property tax was 9% in 2019. Actual property tax, 8%, sales and use tax, 61%. The sales tax pie has been updated since the September 14th study session for the August sales tax actuals. The items to note on this slide is the update for August is showing 10% decline compared to 2019. Um, as we discussed last time, June and July was doing much better, but now it's back down to 10%. Um, and that's a 4.8% down compared to 2019 for year-to-date. I'm sorry, and year-to-date is also 10%. But uh, for the delayed remittance is a .9 million, and then the year-to-date is down 8%, at 3.9 million, um, including the delayed remittance. So the areas that um, really shifted in this pie over to the right are power utilities are down 9%, so power utilities. Is this gray one here? Um, and it was up 19% last month compared to previous year. All other is down 7%, and it was uh, down 1% last month. Um, and the supercenter is down 17%, and last month it was down 6%. Restaurants are down 16%, and they were down 14% last month. Now we'll move on to the general fund revenues. This graph shows you the 2019 actuals, with this first column, the 2020 adopted budget, the 2020 revised budget, and the 2021 through 2025 forecast for the general fund revenue, net of the Tabor limit. The blue shows the revenue, so these columns show the revenue. The gold shows the use of fund balance. The 2020 revised revenue is expected to decline 10%, so this one, 10% from the 2020 adopted budget, so this column right before it. And an increase of 1% from 2020 revised to the 2021 budget. As you can see from the developed reduction plan, there is not an extensive use of fund balance to offset the 17 million um, gap that needs to be addressed. There is expected to be a larger use of fund balance in 2020 of 8.2 million. Um, so 8.2 versus original forecast was 6.6. And, and then decreased to 4.6 in 2021. The approach, the approach that was taken was to make sustainable reductions versus depleting the general fund balance. With this plan, you can see that the expectation is Lakewood will stop using fund balance for operations at the end of 2021. We're expecting revenue to recover and exceed 2019 actuals. However, you can see a flattening of the revenue between 2024 and 2025. It is forecasted Lakewood will start reinvesting in the city in 2023. However, it's not going to be sustainable with a flattening or decline of revenue streams. This slide shows you the general fund expenses for 2019 actuals, the 2020 adopted budget, the 2020 revised, and the 2021 proposed, which are the blue bars. The other colored sections, um, you, uh, you will see are the reductions that were made um, to fill the gap between revenue and expenses. This includes facility closures, bank compositions, transfers, and other expenses. In September 14th presentation, a detailed list of these reductions was provided. As was shown in the total city spending, this shows how much is spent in each department and the split of personnel and non-personnel after the reductions for the general fund. As you can see, the largest area spending for the general fund is the police department, so that section. As I mentioned before, are all other departments. So this orange section here includes mayor, council, city manager's office, city clerk, city attorney, finance, HR, municipal courts, and planning. Moving on to the general fund balance usage, this is showing 2019 actuals, 2020 adopted budget, the 2020 revised, and forecast for 2021 through 2025. The blue bars are the fund balance themselves, and the red is the balance usage. And then green is adding to the fund balance. As we saw on the earlier slide, the general fund revenue, you can see the use of fund balance for 2019, 2020, and 2021. And then there's a start of contribution to the general fund in the later years. The second red column that circled is the 2020 adopted budget. So that was, is being replaced by the 2020 revised um, budget. We're forecasting a larger use of the fund balance, but not significantly more considering the $17 million gap that needs to be addressed. As we discussed in the revenue slide, you can see the contribution to general fund for revenue starts to decline in 2025 due to the expected flattening or decline. So you can see the contribution for um, 2024 is 4.1 million, 2025 is 2 million. Now we'll talk about Tabor funds. In 2018, voters elected to allow the city to keep revenue collected in excess of the Tabor limit through 2025. By voting to temporarily lift the limit, taxpayers enabled the city to direct Tabor refund dollars to three primary areas. A separate fund has been identified to detail how all Tabor dollars will be spent. These monies represent the only significant new investment in the city, the city will make in 2021. This slide shows what was historically refunded and what was transferred to the Tabor fund. So the blue is what was historically refunded, orange is what was retained. The Tabor fund that Lakewood has been able to keep is $29.9 million to date. Going forward, the city is estimating there will be a continued transfer from the general fund to the Tabor fund, even though the city expects revenue declines. This is due to the ratcheting down effect. So why is this important? The fund for Tabor to, um, for Tabor go to public safety, public works, and community resources, which makes up 75% of the general fund budget. If we are transferring the funds over from the general fund to the Tabor fund, and they can be used for those three areas, why is there a concern? You would think it is only the other twenty five percent that can't use the funds. This would be true if you could use the Tabor funds on any expense in operations. However, although the funds are spent for public safety, public works, and parks within community resources. The Tabor funds do not pay for operation, operating costs, and can only be utilized for specific purposes. So how can Tabor funds be used? Tabor funds can be used for park acquisitions, which has dedicated funds of eight point five, you can see over here. The remaining funds are split in thirds between parks, police, and transportation. The third that is for parks is for park acquisitions, park improvements, and park maintenance. The third for, um, one third for the police can be used for assets and personnel, which is the least restrictive. You can see in the donut, two point two million dollars has been dedicated to police program staffing. And five point six million for police equipment and software. The third for public works can be used on transportation, sidewalks, and outdoor lighting. Which is much more restrictive than all the services provided by public works. When revenue exceeds the Tabor limit and retained for Tabor funding. These funds are not available for the general fund operating budget. They're only available for the purposes I just discussed. Which are mostly for supporting new investments versus supporting our current services the city provides. On the next slide, there is a list of projects, um, in each grouping. So some examples of what the Tabor funds projects are is the police has a safety and protective equipment project. Technology investments and software enhancement, health and well-being, for health and well-being programs. Or health and well, uh, health and wellness. Um, homeless navigators and cat team funding. And then transportation infrastructure has roadway intersection improvements. Shared use path projects, sidewalk improvements. Parks has open space acquisitions, Bear Creek Green Belt renovation, park facilities improvement. So going back to why this is a concern, although these are all, uh, worthy investments. This fund does not assist in the fundamental problems that was discussed earlier with Lakewood becoming an established city. And expecting a flattening or declining in revenue, which there will be a continued increase in demand and needs for current services. Without an increase in funding. Another way to look at this is it is like Lakewood is buying new cars with Tabor funds. But the funds to maintain the current cars and the new cars is not increasing. Additionally, the seventeen million dollar funding gap due to COVID and the ratcheting down effect will compound this concern. So what does it mean that the seventeen million dollar fin- funding gap and the ratcheting down effect will compound this concern? First, the reduction was taken out of the general fund for operations. Which reduces the amount available for supporting our existing services and assets. Second, by having a lower Tabor base, even if the revenue returns. It will take longer period of time to get up to the previously allowable revenue due to the Tabor calculation. This slide shows you an illustration of what we are estimating the impact will be to the general fund operations. Due to the Tabor calculation and the ratcheting down effect. This is assuming there would be a three percent allowable growth each year. If this does not occur, then it will be longer period to get back to the prior revenue levels. We expect the Tabor transfer to be higher in two thousand twenty one and decrease in later years as Tabor allows. Um, allows more to be added to the base. The two thousand twenty transfer, so this one point eight million dollars. Assumes that Lakewood will start to hit the Tabor limit for property tax. Even though all revenue is expected to be lower than the two thousand nineteen base. In our presentation in September fourteenth, we did talk about the differences of the two calculations. Of total revenue and, um, the property tax calculation. So going back to the car analogy. Through making adjustments for COVID, we have decreased how much funding we have to maintain the cars we have now. Due to adjusting for the expected reduction in revenue. And with the ratcheting down effect, we are transferring, transferring some of the funds that were previously used for maintaining the current cards. For buying more cars. So to put that in context for Lakewood, we are reducing spending for the general fund operations. By almost seventeen million dollars for the two thousand twenty budget and two thousand twenty one, uh, budget. We are receiving twenty nine point nine million dollars to invest in new assets. As mentioned earlier, the Tabor projects are the only significant new investment that will be made in two thousand twenty one. These new investments that will occur over a period of time. Will need to be partially maintained by reduced general fund budgets for operations. This squeeze in funding for operations from the general fund will be an ongoing area to look at. Lakewood will continue to analyze and recommend solutions for addressing this concern. So this is the end of the Lakewood budget presentation. We're looking forward to hearing your feedback on the proposed two thousand twenty revised and two thousand twenty one budget. And we also are looking forward to working with you on discuss, discussing or evaluating. The longer term sustainability of revenue for Lakewood. The next meeting will be October twenty sixth. Um, and I did want to mention, uh, stop sharing for a moment. Um, I did want to mention that, um, as the mayor, um, brought up, we sent out the list. Of questions that, um. Uh, had come to us from the council and provided answers. I won't be going through that in, uh, detail, um, uh, today, tonight, because it's ten pages long. And, um, there's numerous questions that were asked. And, uh, extensive answers that were provided. However, for tonight, we'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions you have or additional questions. There is one thing, um, that I wanted to mention that is not in the list. Which is a recommendation that came from, um, Ms. Feeley. Uh, she had, uh, recommended, and I'm paraphrasing here. Um, she had recommended that for two thousand twenty one, Lakewood reduce their contribution. For the previous city manager's pension fund. Um. Due to, uh, thinking that the fund was overfunded or that you could, you could reduce it for one year. So, um, I wanted to address that, um, recommendation she made. City council received her email, um, so I wanted to let you know our analysis about that. So currently, the city contributes every year to this plan. There's a certain amount that needs to be contributed in total from the city to get to the level that the plan will be self-sustaining. And we won't need additional contributions each year to make the payouts. So there are two approaches that sit, the city could take to make this contribution. One is what Ms. Feeley is recommending of using the normal cost plus thirty year payoff. You're not going to know what that means, but what it basically means is that the city would contribute for thirty years. To give it the total contribution the city needs to give for that pension plan. The second option is the approach the city took, which is to pay into the plan the recommended of actuarial contribution. So this, um, approach was taken so that Lakewood would contribute the least number of years. Before the plan became self-sustaining and Lakewood would no longer have to contribute. There are a few challenges with shifting our approach now that the city is close to ending its annual contribution. Which will be in two thousand twenty three. So in two thousand twenty four, there will be relief to the general fund. If we continue on the, um, path that we're currently on. But there are a few challenges with making that shift. And one is reducing the contribution in two thousand twenty one below the actuarial recommendation, which is what we use today. Will require that assets in the annuity be sold to make the cash payments to the recipient. Because the contribution would not be enough. So Ms. Feeley is recommending that we contribute seventy thousand. We are, um, if we continue on our current plan, we contribute two hundred and thirty thousand. Um, which would cover the cash payout. So therefore, the assets are currently growing, that are currently growing right now. Um, to get, uh, to the point of sustaining will be diminished if we start using the assets to pay out. The second challenge is the two thousand, oh, sorry, the seventeen million reductions that were required. On an ongoing, um, were created to do an ongoing reduction. Since we will have to continue to maintain spending at a lower level for multiple years. Ms. Feeley's suggestion is delaying payment. There, um, there's still liability from the city and will have to be paid in future years. If it is not in two thousand twenty one. So it can't be used as an ongoing cost saving measure like the other identified reductions. We'd have to identify other reductions for ongoing savings. Since the ongoing reductions have already been identified, this, um, delay payment would go into the fund balance. If, uh, the recommendation were implemented. One item to note with our current approach, um, the contribution for two thousand twenty one is expected to be two hundred and thirty thousand. Which is twenty thousand less than the two thousand nineteen contribution. So we would be, um, contributing less than what we did previously, just based on the actuarial recommendation. So I will. Um, one moment. Um. We will go on with the presentation from Mr. Smith to talk about the LRA. Um, and then any additional questions you have, we can turn it back over to the mayor. So I will, um, start sharing the presentation again. And.
Thank you, Ms. Bjorklund.
Well, thank you very much, uh, chairman and commissioners of the, uh, LRA. Uh, I thought it'd take just a minute here to talk about the, uh, LRA budget. It's always difficult to tell the, uh, regular city budget from the LRA budget. But the way you can do this very easily is the LRA budget has a picture of the Alameda Streetscape project on it. Uh, and then the city budget, of course, has this beautiful, uh, Colorado Columbine on it. So the budget we're talking about here is the one with the, uh, Alameda Streetscape project on it. Um, the reason that we do that is because the, uh, LRA, the Urban Renewal Authority is a separate unit of government, yes? Um, the, uh, the, uh, mayor and the city council members become the chairperson and the commissioners of the LRA. Um, but our revenue streams are a little different and our expenses are a little different. Uh, Holly, if you wouldn't mind pushing a button so that we can go on to the next slide, I sure would appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt with your rhythm here, just to point a clarification and maybe Mr. Cox. Uh, are we passing both of these tonight as one motion? And do we need to separately call a roll call for the commission?
I believe I can speak to this while Tim's getting unmuted.
Okay.
LRA is passed by resolution, um, and will be heard on the twenty sixth. And is, I believe, Mr. Smith's presentation is informational only, uh, tonight, no action necessary.
Great. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
That's correct.
You bet. Smith, thank you.
Well, uh, talking about a couple of the major projects that we had on here, and of course, the expanded version in the study session. If folks would like to go back and get a little bit of detail on it, I've got two slides tonight. The first one is the Alameda Streetscape project, you can see that in front of you. Uh, we're looking towards the east, you can see the, uh, uh, city of Denver downtown skyline over there on the upper left-hand, uh, portion of it. Um, but all of the green areas that you see along the median, along the two sides of the street, that's part of the Alameda Streetscape project. We have sidewalks all the way from Sheridan to Carr on both sides of the street. We have a very wide, uh, right of way throughout Alameda, um, that we have put a lot of landscaping and medians and, and then those sorts of things into. Um, and that project is, uh, wrapping up in, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, and then will be all complete by the, uh, year's end. Then the other project that we've got, if you would, uh, hit the button again, um, is essentially the, uh, station betterment projects. Two stations along the west line up, uh, in the Colfax, uh, urban renewal area. This one happens to be the one that's pictured here is the Oak Street Station one, and you see those, those walking boats that are, uh, very, very, uh, popular. Folks are, are always enamored when they see those, uh, that artwork. But these are the kinds of things that we put in as enhancements in there. Uh, there's bike racks and, and, uh, some green space that's associated with that one. And then there's some over on the Wadsworth side. Um, these were two loans that were taken out in two thousand and eight, um, financed this year, um, very kind to them. Tip of the hat, um, we're able to refinance those loans, save about a hundred twenty five thousand bucks, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, annual budget there. So those are the two projects that we want to mention for both of those areas of, of the urban renewal. And with that, I will wrap it up. And if you have any questions, uh, happy to entertain those, uh, as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
We'll turn it back over to you.
All right. So thank you for that. So I'll now go to public comment. On the first hearing, again, one three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. Webinar ID nine four zero, zero three three nine, zero seven five four. Press star nine to speak, star six to unmute. I do not see anybody in the queue, Ms. Salazar. I'll wait here just real, real quick to make sure. Again, I know that that's also on the screen. We'll also mention if we can't get an answer for you tonight, we'll make sure we continue to log those in that same format. Uh, Ms. Bjorklund, is that answer, the question and answer? Um, document, is that available to the community or somewhere where the community can see that?
Um, I think it's on the, what is it called? Ben, can you say where that is?
I, I don't think it's on Lakewood Speaks right now, but I think we can add it after the meeting. Um, and maybe compile any additional questions that come up tonight. And then, um, if Kathy's good with that, we'll put it up on Lakewood Speaks or the city website or both, so.
I, I think it'd be super helpful. There's a lot of really great questions, um, in there, and again, ten pages. Would also mention too, online, you can go and see the exact projects that those Tabor dollars have gone to. And so there's a, a nice, uh, kind of breakdown in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty of the exact ones. So going once, going twice, going three times on public comment. Still seeing none. I will close that mayor pro tem. I'll ask for a motion and then we can go into questions.
Mayor, I move to accept ordinance, oh, that, twenty twenty dot twenty six, on meeting and order the ordinance to be published in the Denver Post. With second public hearings for October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Right. Motion and a second. Miss, or councillor Gutwitz? Ms. or Counselor Gutwine, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bjorklund, for your presentation. I also wanted to thank you, Mayor Paul just mentioned this, but for the really clear and well laid out information on the website so that residents can look at exactly what program or what projects we completed with the Tabor dollars. I get questions about that all the time and so it's just so helpful. So really appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. I, or some follow up questions about the slash facility. I just received information in response to a question that the slash facility is no longer in the proposed budget. And a couple of things, so. You know, of course, I really understand the situation that our city is in and, and that we're facing due to budget cuts from COVID-19. And frankly, about the long term economic status and how we're going to pay for all of these things moving forward in our services. I still though, believe that our community really cares about clean air and our natural environment. And I, you know, we have, we've all seen all these numbers of, from our community citizen survey and how important this is to people. You know, 78% think quality of overall natural environment is important. We've been getting emails about this today from community members. And I, I was concerned during our sustainability meeting that we were behind on our goals. And how are we going to catch up? But then I found out tonight that on top of that, we're, this current budget cuts the slash facility. And so just want to make a quick note that I'm, I'm a little bit concerned just about, you know, that that wasn't, I, I, I cannot find a place that that is called out in the budget that that was going to be a change. And so I just want to voice that I am, I guess frustrated that I, this is something that's on our priority list. It's important to our community, we've been talking about this for six years. And until I asked that direct question, that was not highlighted. So I'm just, so that's one thing. But moving on from that, I do have some additional follow up questions because I just want to understand and kind of process what this means. So my, my questions are, basically, you know, in the answer that we got back, it says it's cut, but we're still going to work on it. And so I just want to understand that a little bit and what that means. So I'm not sure who to direct that question.
Ms. Hodgson, do you want to?
So, so this is about status of the slash facility, potential slash facility? You're right. So there were many capital items that were cut in the capital improvement program. However, sustainability is one of your council goals and that is something that we continue to try and find a site. It looks like we're making a little headway with another partner and that would be the county. We've just gotten an update today that looks more positive than we had thought. When COVID hit, quite honestly, our agency and several other agencies just put those conversations on hold. And now we're hearing that that's another potential opportunity again. So that's, that's very good news. I personally am working on a slash site, whether it is in partnership with a county or at another separate location in the city. That's been our challenge to date. It's really hard to find a location because of the nature of slash facilities. So, you know, the money that was set aside in the capital improvement program was just that. There, there really wasn't relevant to any particular expenditures because we didn't have a location. So even though the money's gone, that doesn't make the priority as trying to find a, a site for the facility, it doesn't make that go away. My hope is we'll be able to land on something soon. That's, that's our hope because it has been a long term, a long term endeavor with several key stakeholders in our organization trying to solve this particular problem. So even though it's not in the budget, if, if and when we're able to find a site or make a deal on a partnership, that'll come back to you. And either way, it would have taken council action. So you'll hear about it if and when we ever are able to kind of land this thing. I do have, I honestly have hope that we'll be able to get something done in this next year.
That's, that's great to hear. Just want to understand that a little bit more though, because the, you know, so it was, it was in the budget, there were dollars allocated. It would have required staff action, but we would have already had those dollars set aside. Whereas now, we don't. And so where's that money going to come from? Do we have to take it from the reserves or, you know?
Right. So we, we don't, we don't know what those costs are going to be. If we're lucky, we'll have it funded elsewhere, say through a partner agency or through a public private endeavor. So like I said, the money that was budgeted and set aside wasn't, wasn't as relevant to any specific project. It was a set aside. So once we have some kind of partnership or some kind of go forward, that'll come to you. And there, there are all kinds of options we can use, we can finance it. We can, you all can make the decision to fund it through your reserves or whatever. And like I said, we don't know what that amount might be, but we'll certainly bring that to you, understanding that that's a real priority for the city council.
Okay. You know, I'll just voice to all of you that that would be, that's a concern to me. Just because this already has, we already faced significant barriers, even when we had the funding already in the budget, which was a policy decision years ago. And then now to have no money behind it, it's, it just, that, that creates a much bigger barrier when we're already cutting funds and losing money. I do appreciate the, the state that we're in, but I just, given how long this project has been in place and, and how long we've all been working on it, I just, I'm, I'm not sure yet what we should do, but I, I, I'm not thrilled about this plan, I guess. And I just also feel like at this point, we really, in the middle of having these conversations about our budget this year, and then as we move into planning for our next year and all the years after that, how, how are we going to fund our sustainability goals? And if, if we want to have clean air, I mean, the two things that hear the most from residents right now are about COVID, of course, and about clean air. I mean, we've all been breathing smoke and our eyes are red and people with asthma, which I, I happen to have asthma and kids. I mean, it's, it's on everybody's mind, this is a concern in our community. And I just want to have real, honest, hard conversations about how are we going to still accomplish our goals in the middle of all this? And so I just, you know, I, I don't know if at this point, the answer is to propose an amendment. I don't know, but this is a concern and I just found out about it. So I'm still trying to figure this out. One other question I have is just about what other capital improvement projects were cut? And maybe, yeah, just what other types of projects were cut?
I would ask Jay Hutchison, who I believe is online. I would ask Jay Hutchison, our Director of Public Works, to respond to that question.
Thank you.
So while we're waiting for Jay, I just have one comment. One thing that you can look at is the revenue opportunities that we're bringing forward, looking at those to specifically fund something that you're interested in. And also keeping in mind that the slash program for Jeffco is also available to Lakewood residents. It's not quite as, as accessible or as convenient, but it is, it is something that is accessible to them. And just one other comment, Ryan Diamond is the one that actually put together that Tabor list and he will continue to update it. So thank you to Ryan.
Thank you, Counselor, for the question about capital projects and their, the changes that have occurred in the budget. One of the things we can do before your next meeting on this topic is give you a comprehensive list. I'm not sure I can be comprehensive right now, but I can certainly touch on several that have been affected. In addition to the slash facility funding, you may remember that there was a shared use path sidewalk program that was an ongoing program, budgeted at $500,000 per year. Those out years beyond 2021, or I'm sorry, beyond 2020, I believe it was, are now gone. There's not the ongoing funding that we had year after year after year on that particular program. Another example is the, what was the public art program. There was a capital improvement fund contribution to purchasing public art and that program also is ending. And, and there's, there's some similarities between these particular programs. And that is that these were, all of these had funding for a, a goal, but not specific uses identified yet. And that's the consistent theme. What has been funded is, is the legal obligations that the city has, that's been funded by the CIF. The maintenance and replacement programs are continued in the CIF. And then the discrete, already predefined, completely defined projects are still funded in the CIF. So as an example, there are some sidewalks that have already been identified. The locations are identified, what street they're on, what their limits are. Those are still funded in the CIF. Those were, have been approved in earlier discussions by the city council. And that's really kind of the dividing line on what we were able to do. A year ago, this process actually started because prior to the budget adopted a year ago, there was also money in the out years anticipating matching transportation grants. That, that, that set aside for transportation grant match was not shown in last year's budget, but it had been in previous budgets for the last three years of the capital improvement program. So as the, the Chief Financial Officer mentioned earlier, this is not a new trend, but it's one that's been accelerated by COVID and has certainly, certainly come home to roost at this point. But as I said, when I started, we will put together a comprehensive list of those changes from what were in the last budget.
Thank you. I have a couple of extra questions. Just, so the shared use path program, is that the program where when we were resurfacing streets, we would add a multi-use, like the shared use paint line, or is this something else?
This is something else.
Okay.
The street resurfacing where a bike lane might be added, that, that's a very minimal cost and is just taken care of as part of the resurfacing program. These are paths such as the one that's proposed and under, and about ready to go to construction down on the south part of Wadsworth, south of Mansfield. So this is a separate facility away from the vehicular traffic that can be used by pedestrians, bicyclists, those kind of uses. So it's, it's a, to many, it would look like a new sidewalk or a wide sidewalk, but separate from the motor vehicle area.
Thank you. And so the street resurfacing program will still include the, the bike lanes?
Yes, we will continue to implement the, the adopted city bicycle plan to the extent we can using that resurfacing program. It's the most efficient financially by far and we made a fair amount of progress on that, that program.
Thank you. The other, one other question about slash, sorry to go back to this, but do, where did the original funding for that program come from? Was, my recollection, but I was not on council at this time, is that they made a allocation from the reserves to fund this program, but I'm not sure if that is accurate. Does, does anyone know where that funding allocation came from?
Since I'm the one that's unmuted, my recommendation would be that, that we verify that. I'm not sure my memory is going to be good enough.
And I certainly was a part of that and we did a big drawdown during those years because I think we were over 35 million in reserves. And I want to say we took out maybe 10 million for different things and that could have been one of them. I'm not sure, so we better get the correct information out there.
Would it be possible to get the 20, a copy of the 2015 budget? I was looking online and that they're online up to 2016 and none earlier. So I would just love to see that budget.
Yes, I can provide that as well as identify where those funds came from.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you. I think that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
When you are done, will you un raise your hand for me, please? So I have Councilors Labir, Springsteen, and then Abel.
Thank you. One question I had, is this, can we get the slideshow emailed to us later? The one that, I, I'm not sure if this is the same slide that's on the website already. We had this presentation on the budget.
I'll send it out.
Great. Yeah, I think I had some similar questions and I guess concerns to sort of what Counselor Gutwine mentioned about the slash facility. And I think it brings up an interesting point. I think it is, it would be good to take a look at our processes and the way that we do the budget to have a little bit more clarity and perspective about what the changes are. Obviously, we have the budget, we looked through it. I remember talking to Councilwoman Gutwine about the slash facility and I was perusing through it, looking for it in there. And I think might be a little easier if we have a little bit more clarity in the future, like a list or something like that, because it's, obviously it's difficult to peruse a 500 page document to find what changes may or may not have happened. One question I had, and obviously if any of these things can't be answered, certainly you can get back to me. I wasn't able to get some of these things in over the weekend. But about FTEs, we're not having any changes, is that correct, really, of FTEs? We obviously have positions that aren't going to be filled if we don't have the revenue for it, but we're not actually changing anything with FTEs, is that, is that accurate?
Leaving the positions open and unfunded.
Okay, got it. Okay, I want to make sure I was clear on that. And then on capital improvements, I believe it's my understanding, we're not adding any new capital improvement projects. I know we just talked about the cutting, but are we adding anything that's different or new for this year?
The only thing we're adding is Tabor projects.
Okay, great. Let's see. And then obviously, I know you were all aware of the COP funding. We're no longer going to be making payments at the end of the year on COP funding. My question is, with that, is that already, is there plans? Does the budget already contemplate what happens with that revenue? Other than I assume if we have those open FTE positions, that money just gets put into the general fund and then gets divided up with those FTEs, is that the current thinking? gets put into the general fund and then gets divided up with those FTEs? Is that the current thinking?
So when we estimated what our revenue was going to be going forward, that accumulated everything. So the sales tax reductions, um, increase in property tax, we weren't going to have to pay, um, certain expenses, you know, like the COP you mentioned. So it was all accumulated and then saying we have to cut 17 million after that. Does that make sense?
So what I think I hear you say is that, yeah, you understood that this was going to be paid off, so you're adding that into the, the expected revenue for the 2021 budget?
Right, that if it hadn't, if we hadn't accounted for it, we would have to cut more than 17 million.
Do you know how much that amount is for the COPs?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, got it. Well, I, I've been talking about the COPs and I think every budget meeting for the past two years. So I'm a little bit frustrated that we haven't, um, had a little bit more conversation about, you know, how, how we would want to look at, uh, you know, utilizing those funds. Obviously, I understand this is a difficult time, and we're trying to find, you know, every opportunity, uh, to make sure that, you know, that the bills are paid and the lights stay on, but I just want to mention, uh, that. I think that's another one of those areas where, um, I don't feel like there was good communication or there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, um, conversation about, um, you know, how we're going to move forward, um, as it relates to, to that particular, um, expense. Um, and then, uh, obviously recreational marijuana, that's on the ballot this election, that's coming up in a couple more weeks. The budget doesn't contemplate any type of revenue from that, does it? I assume not, but I didn't see it in there.
No, we did not include it because we didn't know if it would pass.
Okay. Well, I think I should just let the council know. I think if it does pass, I think we should have a, uh, discussion about, uh, that as well. Um, whether or not any of that should be going into reserves or helping backfill some of these projects or anything like that. Um, yeah, I do, similarly with the slash project, I think this is sort of that process issue again. Um, you know, I think my question is, is it whether or not there was a, a decision point or, or an inflection point or any opportunity for council to weigh in on sort of what the values, uh, of the council might have been. Obviously, we made sustainability, um, a priority. We made homelessness a priority. We've made numerous things a priority for the year, and we know that, uh, COVID and recession and all sorts of other things have had a giant impact, but I think, um, you know, there might have been other opportunities. There might have been other projects or things that council might have wanted to weigh, uh, against, um, making any changes to the, uh, the slash facility fund and, and, uh, you know, I would, I would want to take a look at, uh, putting that back in as well, or, you know, looking at a resolution or something to, to get that back in, um, in a line item. That way we know that it is a priority and our, our residents can feel confident that, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that sustainability continues to be a priority. And then, let's see, I think, I think that's all I have. Got it. Yep, that's all I have right now, but, uh, certainly be happy to, uh, get more questions back to you that are more specific. That way, uh, we can have more detailed answers, obviously. Thanks, appreciate it.
Uh, Councilor Springsteen and then Abel, and will you un-raise your hand when you're done, please?
Hi, uh, so I just had a question regarding what you said about, uh, what Tabor funds can cover. And you said that they could cover police technology. So we were discussing the body cams we're going to get, uh, by March, what was it? 2022. Um, so I'm wondering if Tabor funds can cover that kind of new technology or what part of our budget is covering it, if, if not. Thanks.
Yes. Holly, can you, um, discuss that? Thank you. Thanks, Councilor Springsteen.
Uh, so the investment, the upfront investment, purchasing the, the cameras and, um, technology piece of it can be, um, you can use Tabor dollars and that is the plan. The concern about that, um, uh, unfunded mandate is more about the ongoing costs. So it takes multiple staff to, um, manage that, look at the videos, um, make sure the cameras are working, et cetera. Um, so that has to come from our existing budget today. Um, and as you know, we don't have a lot of extra, um, to be able to, um, fit that in. So that's where the challenge is.
So, so if we save money in lawsuits against the city, is there any accounting for what we're saving versus what we're putting out in terms of obtaining that technology?
So we wouldn't know until we actually experience it. You know, if we're having less lawsuits or not.
All right. Anything else, Councilor Springsteen? Okay, could you do me a favor and take your hand down, and then Counselor Abel, and then Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, listening to Councilwoman Gutwine and, uh, uh, Labir, Councilman Labir, uh, it brings to mind, uh, a few years back, Councilwoman Shakti described our budget as a moral document, and that it is. It reflects our values, such as, uh, sustainability. You know, we were, we're cutting a flash, a slash facility, and we want to be known as a canopy city. Uh, and then there's the clean air portion of it that, uh, Ms. Gutwine so aptly pointed out. Uh, shared use paths, you know, that's about the most inclusive thing we have and that one of the most inclusive expenses we have in this city. Uh, and along that line, I'd like to suggest that COFAX could use, uh, a project like the Alameda Street Scape in a really bad way. So, uh, also, speaking of inclusivity, a couple of weeks ago, I had an answer about, uh, $800,000 that's being spent for tennis court replacements over at Lakewood Park. Uh, last summer, we spent $200,000 on, uh, to replace two of them. And we have done a really good job maintaining those courts, as, as, uh, was pointed out a couple of weeks ago, and four years ago, four or five, we spent nearly $90,000 resurfacing all those courts. Uh, the upshot is, though, that the vendor charges eight bucks per court per hour. And there are a number of, uh, schools, elementary and junior, uh, middle schools in that area that have half, about half or more of their student population on free and reduced lunches. Those kids cannot afford $8 an hour to play tennis. And a lot of them would like to play tennis, and all of these schools are worth an easy bike ride of the, of the park. The, there is, uh, a provision for free use of the tennis courts. Two of the 10 courts, I believe, uh, are available for two hour, four hours a week, on Monday afternoon and Sunday afternoon. That is, if the courts aren't already occupied by people using them, or if the, uh, and I, I've heard that sometimes folks have gone to claim their free hours and, uh, the staff is not aware of the free hour, of the free program. So, that's $800,000 that could be spent on these things later, and, but could be spent this year in more, uh, responsive ways, more inclusive ways, you know, add it to the, uh, shared use paths. Use it for a, uh, a, uh, slash facility. There are a lot of ways that we could be more inclusive with that money, and in these days, we need to get the biggest bang out of our dollars. And, uh, I, I just think that because those courts are used primarily by folks, uh, of means, that we could find a much more inclusive use of, for the nearly million dollars we're going to spend this year on those courts. Uh, and I think, uh, certainly with the preventive maintenance we've had, we could, uh, put that, put this, uh, court replacement off for a while, if nothing else. But, uh, you know, I just believe that the way, uh, these courts are handled, it is anything but inclusive. And for the $17 million gap, over $800,000 we have counts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lowering my hand, boss.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Counselor Johnson, your hand is up, and then I have a few comments.
Thank you. Holly, I really appreciate the document that you prepared with all of the answers. Thank you. It's nicely done. On the very last page, in response to the question on Tabor, um, it was talking about one-third of the money for police can be used for assets, and that's cameras, that's awesome, and personnel. And I would just like to say that it's an unsteady funding stream. And just to use caution when you're hiring personnel, because one year the money may be a higher amount than the next year. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I want to touch on a couple of things just real quick, and, and Ms. Bjorken, one thing you did talk about, the new car model, which I certainly understand, right? If we're out utilizing these dollars and we don't have the backfill of maintenance. But we also don't have to spend those dollars either. They can still continue to sit there, you know, beyond the expiration, and so I want to keep that in mind, too. I know we have needed things that we have to take care of. However, those dollars can sit in that separate fund for a long time, and potentially the open space dollars are going to have to sit there for a long time. I think we've had that conversation of some challenges with finding, um, areas to purchase. So just want to mention that while, while we, we certainly understand the dilemma, it's something we're going to have to confront, but we can also look in the future, maybe keeping them held back until we have some sort of recovery. The second thing I want to talk about, just in general, of all our priorities, they are listed line by line in the budget, and not every priority that we have has a line item with dollars next to it. So as, as somebody that was one of the original proponents of slash and probably helped get that to where it was, I also understand that we're in the middle of one of the worst financial crises we've ever had. And if it makes people feel good to say that there's 1.5 million dollars sitting there for something that we may not even need 1.5 million dollars for, right? We may be able to get it for free. I think that that's prudent of us utilizing city dollars to ensure that we are providing highest level of services with the resources that we have. You know, whether that 15, 1.5 million was there or not, that still would have had to come back to council for a conversation and a vote if we were going to acquire land or if we were going to get into a lease purchase. So I think that we continue to have our priorities listed in the budget. And I certainly think that a slash facility is of utmost importance. And I do know that we are working on that, and just because those dollars have been transferred, that doesn't necessarily mean by any means, and you heard the city manager say she is personally working on this, that we won't get to a spot where we find this. In fact, there was a conversation just a couple of weeks ago that might allow for the city to participate with somebody else paying for it in the city of Lakewood. So those things are out there. I just want to make sure council remembers that. And frankly, sorry, Counselor Franks, frankly, you know, we had six really great items that tie into all of our concerns about infrastructure, um, COPs. Like, we've had more budget meetings this year than we've ever had with updates and with talking about COPs. And so, you know, to say, what are those dollars? I wish I knew better. I, I felt like maybe we were trying to have those earlier, and if you really want to talk about COPs, I mean, that's a larger conversation about municipal funding that could really go a long way to have this council look at priorities 10, 15, 20, 30 years out. Those are the tools that are there for us. But right now, we're triaging. We're trying to stop the bleeding every which way we can. And so I think it is worth this council. We're going to have to have some tough conversations, a, a check-in or a retreat to really look at our priorities. We have a lot of priorities that are very important, but as this year has shown, we are so far behind just because we're trying to make cuts of epic proportions, and luckily we've had strong reserves to get us through. So, you know, I, I value everything that, that was talked about. And Counselor Abel, I certainly know that this issue with, uh, tennis courts goes a, a long way back, and there, there have been some concerns. I do think it's contractually part of, part of a, a deal that is in there. And, um, we can certainly get more background. I know there was some of that in there as well. But, um, all in all, I, I think with what we've had to do and, and the scrambling, I, I'm proud of this council. I'm proud of the team that put forth this budget, um, the most challenging one that we, we've ever faced. And if you still look at our reserves, they're still super strong, and we're going to be building those back up within two years. So I think that, that goes a long way as, as well. So with that, I'm done. Uh, Counselor Bida?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to chime in real quick and say that, first of all, I want to agree with you as far as the great job that our, um, team has done this year, our council and our, uh, financial team in, in handling this crisis that we're in. And, uh, I, I think that they've done an outstanding job of, of juggling things around and moving things around to get, to get us where we're at. I think the numbers speak for themselves. When you really look at where we're at, um, the financial impact on us has really been fairly minimal. And that's partly because of our reserves. It's partly because of our ability to tighten our belt when we needed to. And the other reason is because we had tightened our belt last year before we, anybody even heard of COVID-19. We already were in a very lean and mean posture. So all of those things together has, has put us in a very nice position here. Obviously, we'd like to be better, but, um, I, I'm very proud of, of, of what our team has done, and I just want to thank you for all your work and for the presentation tonight. That's all.
Thank you, counselor, and your hand is still up if you'd just help me manually, because I don't have any other questions or comments. And we do have a motion in a second. Is that accurate? It's been a while.
That's accurate.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second, and this was a continuation to October 26th, where we'll have the, the second and final reading-ish of the 2020, 2021 revised. So barring any other questions or comments, please cast your votes. Counselor Gutwine?
I'm sorry, we're just voting to move this.
Yes, this is the first reading of two reading.
Okay.
Okay, and that passes 10 ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Labir. Okay. General Business, Counselor Gutwine, you had an update under General Business.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide an update on the building inclusive community signs. All of you should have received an email about the signs and that we would move forward with putting the signs essentially back up where the signs originally were, and that Public Works would do so. And we did get some feedback and support. And the signs are scheduled to move forward. So I just want to thank everybody for participating and having that discussion and to thank staff for seeing that through and looking forward to seeing those signs back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? We'll go to reports. And I'll start in Ward One. We'll work our way up to five, mix in the Mayor Pro Tem in there. Ward One?
Thank you, Mayor. I am the chairman of the Legislative Committee in this last week. Their Colorado Municipal League did have a policy committee. They're already looking at some potential legislation and trying to look what the best interest is for all of the cities. And Ben and I attended and with an eye on what is in the best interest of Lakewood as well. So it's going to be an interesting session. Of course, a lot depends on the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Abel?
Yes, thank you. No report, Mayor.
Ward Two?
I'll let Jacob cover our meeting. I guess there's several things going on Wednesday. I just wanted to let folks out there know. I think I thought I mentioned it last time. But Morris Park, as one of their sustainability projects, had, I believe it was fifty trees for five years or a hundred trees for five years. And it was very, very successful. They got the community involved in it. So if any groups out there would like to reach out to them, I'm sure they would be happy to let you know how to replicate that within your own ward or even your own group. But like I said, it was very successful and a lot more trees planted. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Labir?
Yeah. So this month, we're having our annual Two Creeks meeting. We're having our Oakane Park meeting later in the month. And Wednesday, we are having our Ward Two meeting. So a lot of stuff going on, busy month, but we're excited for fall and excited to have some cooler weather come in. Just want to mention the Denver Regional Council of Governments. We did a review of the director. He's done a really great job. The process is pretty extensive. It's pretty detailed. They've had years of trend analysis of good leadership at the Denver Regional Council of Governments. And, you know, happy to get through that process over there and give you all an update that we like what we're seeing at Dr. Cog and hope the positive things continue. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I forgot, if you are on any committees and you wish to give a committee update during these reports, that'd be fantastic, too. Ward Three, Counselor Springsteen. Bida?
I'll let Counselor Springsteen go first.
Alrighty. So just wanted to report on my ongoing report regarding ketamine that I talked to the producer of Sixty Minutes again this week. And she says that the piece on Colorado and the use of ketamine should air sometime this fall. She didn't know specifically when. I'm continuing in my efforts of organizing a stakeholders' meeting regarding the ban of the use of ketamine with Representative Leslie Herrod and Grassroots Law Project. Elijah McKnight, who is sort of a famous person now who was affected by ketamine, is going to appear on the Dr. Oz Show. And so I just continue to encourage council to weigh in on stopping the use of ketamine, as Aurora City Council has done to save lives. Beyond that, I wanted to, because I wouldn't normally bring this up in reports, but it was brought up by the mayor at the last council meeting. And so I wanted to address it because it's come up this week again. The mayor had publicly announced my July 8th request for an investigation of city leadership for harassment and discrimination. The city attorney had informed me in late July that he had chosen an allegedly quote-unquote independent investigator for my request. And I had responded to him in writing that I would not submit to that because he had chosen the investigator when he's part of city leadership and was one of the subjects of the investigation. And I would note that the city attorney did tender his letter of resignation three days later. Although I had explained at the last council meeting that I was requesting help from state and federal authorities to help make the investigation unbiased, the city leadership continues to harass me by informing me this week that they are moving forward with this investigation and this investigator chosen by Mr. Cox. I would submit that this is illegal according to the city charter as the city attorney cannot choose the investigator if he is a subject of the complaint. So therefore, it appears that the city attorney may be withholding some legal advice that he should be giving to council regarding violation of the city charter and that city leadership is generally continuing to harass me further by attempting to force a rigged investigation. And I just want to publicly object to that. I expect that this investigation will be reviewed by state and federal authorities at some point without further victimizing the complainant. And again, I wouldn't bring this up if it hadn't been brought up specifically last week, but I wanted to respond to that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Four?
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on. I'd like my turn.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bida.
Yeah, I just gave her first crack. I just want to say real quick, thank you to our code enforcement for their efforts in the cleanup of the White Fence Farm this past week. I know our residents really appreciate that. I know it's not what all we would totally like, but I think they've brought the, or tried to bring the property into compliance. And that's a big step in the right direction. So I want to thank them for all of their efforts and hard work there. That's all.
Thank you. Ward Four?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I guess I will go first. The first thing I want to do is just to take a moment to acknowledge staff. I have been getting a higher number of community outreach emails and phone calls. And the quality and the timeliness of staff's responses and taking care of those is just really appreciated. And so I just wanted to make sure. Now, I certainly do send those kudos to the city manager and the department head directly, but certainly wanted the community to know that when they're thanking me for the quick and efficient responses, those are really most of the time coming from staff. So certainly wanted to send out those things. The second thing, and I may need the city manager to see if I'm correct on this, but I thought I saw a post yesterday where the upcoming drive-through Vaxstein and Dog License Clinic, which was scheduled for October 17th, has been canceled. I just want to, I saw that and I looked on the city website and it says the event is canceled. But if someone can just make sure, we just want to make sure the public does not go to that if it's not available. And the last thing, I wanted to give an update from the Housing Policy Commission. We met at the end of September. And our work topic at this point is short-term rentals. And the goal of that meeting was to go through a form that had been prepared really as a way to guide us through the upcoming discussion and make sure that all the topics that we feel are relevant are put into an order for discussion. So I know if people said, well, what's this form going to be used for? It's really just to help guide the meeting, help me make sure that we don't miss any important topics. It is not written in stone, meaning it's a document that's living. If we identify additional topics, we certainly will cover those. And currently, Robert Smith, who is our staff liaison, is doing the outreach to all the commissioners to see when we can have our next meeting. Obviously, this time of year, a lot of things going on with folks' schedules. So as soon as that meeting is set, we will have that posted on the city website in the appropriate locations. And that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Let me first speak to Counselor Springsteen's comments. I need to make extremely clear to the community watching and as the chairman of the City Attorney Recruitment Committee, I don't normally give a lot of updates on that committee just out of respect for Mr. Cox, who is sitting with us. If you want updates to that, you can message me personally. Or we do have that on the website. You can see the city minutes or the minutes from those meetings. But let me make clear that his resignation is in no way connected to any investigation. And I know that because of the timing of how the recruitment process has come to be. And it had zero to do with the investigation. It had more to do with the fact that the job posting and the timing of that posting, there at some point will be a handoff from Mr. Cox's firm and his service to the new city attorney, whoever that person may be. So let me, I'll say it one more time because this is critical to, I think, the integrity of our city council to just make clear there is no connection between the resignation of Mr. Cox and the investigation that is being handled pursuant to, I believe it's section six-point-something of our harassment policy that we put into place this body. So there's a lot to unpack about how that investigation is supposed to move forward. I don't think that's appropriate right now in reports. But as the chairman of that committee, I think it's important that I just make clear that there, any insinuation that Mr. Cox is resigning because of some investigation is patently false. Onto a lighter topic. If you're in the neighborhood of Green Mountain, you can stop by the rec center and you can drop off a ballot. So if anyone didn't know that you could vote at Green Mountain Rec Center, please stop by. We have plenty of amenities here in Green Mountain. But right now, probably the most important and best one is that voting box. Right up front, you can't miss it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Ward Five?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to briefly address a piece of information about investigations. And the reason why is because I was actually one of the people that raised the issue and really wanted to ensure that we had a sexual harassment and workplace harassment policy. And so I just want to make sure, and of course, all of council did vote on it. So, but I just wanted to address something that it, the Policies and Procedures Manual is available online on our city council's page. The relevant section is 6.2. And I just wanted to say that, you know, at the time, what we thought was the most fair process was that if there is, if any receiving officer gets a complaint, they must initiate this process. And so I just wanted to make clear to any, to the community listening to this that that's what the language in the policy says is that an investigation must occur if there's a complaint. And then a second thing is that it does lay out the process of how to initiate this. And so that is all in our, all in the Policies and Procedures Manual, which is available online. And I just wanted to clarify that bit of information. Then also, on a lighter, well, actually, it's not really a lighter note, but we're having a mental health conversation and suicide prevention conversation on Wednesday night, the 14th, on Zoom. And at 6:30 PM, I shared all of the information and the link with all of you. I don't, if anyone would like to join, that would be great. What we're going to have is Jeff Co., Mental Health, is presenting information about how to look out for signs in community members or neighbors or friends or whoever that are trouble signs and then what to do. It's a training program, and we've heard great things about this program. So very excited about that. And just, again, just a shout out to our resident, James Mace, who really sparked this conversation because he experienced the loss of a friend due to suicide. And he really wanted to, you know, help prevent other people from losing, you know, just kind of experiencing what he did and doing what he can to help prevent loss. So we hope to see people there and bring your questions. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. I, my screen's kind of blocked. So does that mean you don't have a comment? Okay.
I'll just say, staff is wonderful. No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Labir, your hand was up.
Yeah, sorry to maybe sound a little bit redundant, but my residents get pretty upset if I don't address things that get out and start to linger a little bit. So I just want to comment a little bit about the harassment issues. I want to bring up, first of all, just that, you know, we do have a policy and procedure in place. And I think our city attorney is in a difficult position in that I think we would probably be upset if allegations of harassment and discrimination were not addressed. And, but it also sounds like we're equally frustrated perhaps that city council or that the city attorney's office is following up on allegations of harassment and discrimination. And I don't have a perfect answer here. And I don't want to, I know we're all anxious to get off the meeting and go on with the day. But I just want to bring it up. I think our city attorney is doing the best job he can to try to follow the policies and procedures that we created. And this is, as far as I know, under these new policies and procedures that I also helped at the tail end of approve, this is the first time any allegations of harassment or discrimination have been brought up, I think, between counselors, if that, but I don't know all of the allegations that are out there. So I might be wrong. I see somebody shaking their head. But it's my understanding this is the first time it's been executed. So I don't know that we're going to get it right. I'm open to hearing more. Sounds like there, somebody brought up some things about the charter and all that. I'd love to learn more. And if there needs to be improvements on our policies, I think that's something we should look at. But I do think it is on council to fix those holes and fix those problems. And I, you know, I feel bad that our attorney appeared to be specifically pointed out in this. So put the blame on me. Put the blame on council. I'm happy to work to be the solution. Let me know how I can help. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I appreciate everything that's been said, and I would just echo one thing. And certainly, it goes without repeating, Mr. Cox has served in this. it goes without repeating, Mr. Cox has served in this capacity as an honorable man and an honorable public servant. And to make an allegation like that's just not fair. It's not professional. Um, as this whole council knows, the city of Lakewood is one of the last cities that has a high-bred model where we have a city attorney that works at a firm and also acts as our city attorney. And the decision was made that we felt that the city needed to change that model and go with a full-time in-house city attorney. And Mr. Cox's notice was simply to notify this council that he would not be applying for that position because he still has a firm and a commitment to his firm. So I apologize, Mr. Cox. Um, certainly not a fair allegation. And I would just reference six point two in our Policies and Procedures. Um, that was initiated by Counselor Springsteen. There's nothing that allows you to not un-instigate that or initiate that, especially after you've made public allegations of this. And this council takes this very seriously, as do I, who is the subject, one of the subjects of this. The community needs to know that there has been an investigation and they need to know what the outcome of that investigation is. And your colleagues on council have also asked for an outcome of that investigation, which will be handled by a third party outside of anybody other than, I think, uh, Mr. Peterson in our employee relations. So we're doing this by the book. We're doing it to the letter of the law, that is six point two. And if council wants to reexamine that or discuss charter changes or things along those lines, that's certainly acceptable. But um, you know, this is, this very serious, very serious allegations and the community deserves to have an investigation and an answer. And uh so that's what will continue to take place, absent uh anybody else's direction according to six point two, which was referenced by the complainant. Um, wanted to just direct council, as we continue in this electronic world, there's gonna be a lot of resources on the city's YouTube channel that talk about different programs, different agencies that can really probably be helpful to you in your ward meetings, that could spur conversation with the community. I know there was one that was just put up on the Community Action Team, or I'm sorry, on the Homeless Navigators. And I think there may be one coming on the Community Action Team. So, um, it's hard for us to meet. As you know, we have forty-seven vacant positions and so we are stretched pretty thin. But we're trying to utilize the resources we have that might be beneficial to you and your community members. So I think it's just, if you just go to YouTube and Google City of Lakewood, Colorado, you'll get right to our channel. And that actually has all of our meetings as well and all the different meetings. But a really good resource as we move forward.
Mayor?
Yep.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm sorry. We have over sixty-seven full-time positions that are unfilled. Um, so you know, and yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Over sixty-seven positions. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, get your voting in. In Lakewood, your drop-off boxes are Green Mountain Rec Center, Jeffco Public Health at six four five Parfett, Lakewood City Hall, Lakewood Library on West Twentieth, the Lakewood Link Rec Center on one two nine five South Reed, Ray Ross Park, and Red Rocks Community College. So, I mean, think of how far we've come in a couple of years. There used to only be one drop box in all of the city of Lakewood. And now there's six of, six or seven. You can go to the Jeffco Clerk to find all those. It's safe, it's secure, it's convenient, and you can also track your ballots. So you know, being at City Hall, I've seen the traffic even today was amazing to see how many people are out dropping off their ballots. Then I think it's important for us to be ambassadors to the community that this is a safe process and a secure process. Most important, it is a very uh important process. And then I'm gonna send something to all of council. There's an email that's being circulated about seniors that are in need of having food delivered. And you can actually search by zip code. And so I will send that out and I'll actually get it to Ms. Hodson and the communications team. They're looking for volunteers to try to help get that food out. And, and so that'll be a nice tool that you can utilize via um via a zip code checker. So that's all that I have. We have a, a study session next week and a budget audit meeting. The study session will be in regards to homelessness and hunger. So certainly quite relevant to where we're at right now in, in dealing with these different things. And so with that, I don't know if uh the Clerk's Office or Mr. Cox or Ms. Hodson have anything else they want to weigh in on tonight.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I, I don't want to prolong the conversation on this. I don't think it would be doing uh uh anybody any, any good at this point, but I do want to clarify a couple of points. The policy which was cited in the original complaint, six point two, uh, explains that these, that the uh investigator is to be paid by the city and selected by the city attorney and the H R director. At the time that we appointed that uh individual for this role, uh, there had been no allegation that I was aware of that the city attorney's office was in any way implicated in the alleged harassment and discrimination. I would not have participated in the selection of the investigator had I had any reason to believe that I was going to be a subject of that investigation. The uh management or control of that investigation has now been turned over to H R Director Corey Peterson. Uh, but again, this is the first time I've heard anything uh expressly uh indicating that I'm a subject of any investigation or, or desired investigation. Um, so as the, as the mayor said, we have done this very much by the books and uh plan to continue it in that same manner.
Ms. Hodson, Mr. Goldstein?
I would only add one thing on a, on a different topic about our meeting next week. It, we are gonna have people from the county to address the regional, the regional homelessness efforts. And then we'll, you'll talk just to us about Lakewood's homelessness efforts. And as relates to that navigator uh video, I think it's only three minutes long or maybe three and a half. And I will be showing that so that you can view it during the meeting. And of course, if you want to grab it and show it to constituents at ward meetings or whatever, um, you're more than welcome to do that. So, um, we're trying to work out the technology so I can figure out how to run that um during our meeting because it's only a few minutes. And it really, it really gives you an up-close and personal experience with the two new navigators that we have onboard. So I wanted to give you the heads up. Thank you.
And, and I would just echo, because I know many of you are hearing from your constituents, because I'm certainly copied or a part of it. The increase in homelessness is a challenge and it's more evident than ever. It's more visible than ever. And unfortunately, with the weather getting cold and the situations with our cold weather sheltering, it, it's gonna be very hard. So I, I spoke with a very frustrated lady today and just said, we just gotta continue to try to work, work through this. The Community Action Team is working really, really hard on these different things, but there's no easy answers. And I'm afraid we're just gonna see things probably be more challenging before they are better going into the winter. But I know that's a top of mind for a lot of folks on this council and I appreciate everybody's care and concern on that. So with that, if there's anything else for the good of the whole, we will adjourn the council meeting at nine thirty P M. I want to thank you all very much and we'll see you next week.